Get call to order. The November 2nd workshop meeting of the Board of Education. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Cheryl Fuller.
Here.
Dan Nicholas.
Here.
Terry Pavisic.
Here.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Here.
And Zoe Boyd.
All right, it sounds like we have a quorum. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. See, we have the flag. It's good. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And as is usual, at our workshop meeting, we have student perspectives. And I guess tonight, we're hearing from the students at North High, is that correct?
Yes, North High students.
Wonderful.
Hello.
Hello.
So, I'm really pleased to present three of our members of Color Guard, and I just wanted to point out their coach is over here as well, Chris Zaracosa, and Peter Sio, who is head of medical competition, the other coach, but we thought you might find her a little bit on Color Guard.
Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Rachel Bender. I'm a senior at Downers Grove North, and I've been a captain on Color Guard for the last two years. So, at its core, Color Guard is a visual representation of music using choreography of dance, flags, rifles, and sabers. You may have seen us performing with the band at halftime during football games. I'm just going to tell you a little about the roles of Color Guard. So, we have captains, which are chosen by our lovely coaches and the rest of our team. We create our own choreography and teach it to our teammates, and we get selected through just who our teammates and our coaches think would be best fit for the role. We also have a big and little sister mentor program where our older, more experienced members get paired with our younger, less experienced members. And not only does this show, or not only does this help our newer members learn our beginning tricks and everything, but also helps our older members get new leadership skills that they might not have otherwise had. It's also a good, a very good way for our new members to make friends going into the school year. A lot of freshmen may have worries about going into school without knowing anybody, but with the mentor program that we have, they go in knowing they have a whole family behind them. And so, a little bit about the differences between Color Guard and Winter Guard. Color Guard, we are performing with the band during halftime or performing during homecoming. This is when our training season really is. We take our new members here and really build up their skills and help our new captains too, to build up their new skills that they might not have had before. And our Winter Guard season is when we have one routine that we critique and finesse throughout the entire season through judges tapes, and we compete with this routine for the whole season. This is when we really hone in on our skills and become more of a bonded team. We watch other teams compete, support them, and we really bond through like our longer practices and everything like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Miller. I am a senior at Downers Grove North, and I'm going to talk to you about the time commitment, what kind of a competition looks like during Winter Guard season, and some of the awards that we've won in the past and this year. So, Color Guard is about two days a week about practices, and we have Friday night football games, we also have the assemblies, the parades, the homecoming performances, and then we also have these things called Band Days, which is where we go to a university. We perform at a stadium with a bunch of stadium, or a bunch of other teams, and it's a really good experience to have. And then, Winter Guard is about two to three days a week. We have weekend competitions, and there's different types of competitions. So, we have the circuit, which is basically people in our group, like we compete against South, a bunch of other people under the schools in our area. And then, we also compete at WGI, which is Winter Guard International, which is basically a bunch of teams from around the country, overseas, they come to one spot and they compete, and that's also a really fun experience to see people from different places compete. So, competition days, we have a very early call time, about five or six. We do like this thing called like a pre-practice. We run through the show, we work out all the nicks and crannies that we have, and just make sure it looks perfect. And then, it's kind of, once we get to the competition and we start performing, it's like our hard work is being shown to the judges, like what we've worked hard on, we've put a lot of hours in. It's a really nice experience to have, it's really gratifying. And even if we don't really have the best run, we have a really supportive team, a really good bonding that we have. And the community just is very supportive, no matter what, like we'll cheer on other teams, no matter what, it's a really good community. And then, we also have this thing called a kumbaya circle. It's one of my favorite traditions, so we sit in a circle, we play our show music for Winter Guard, and we kind of just do a mental run-through of what's going to happen, and it just kind of really prepares you. And there's a bunch of rules that go on with Winter Guard. We have like time and space limits, and we have like regulation equipment, how long we can hold equipment, and stuff like that. But Color Guard is a little different. We don't really have rules, we just kind of follow what the band does, we do a bunch of songs with the band and all that. Some awards, so last season, even though it got cut short, we were top two all season, which is really exciting. And it was our first time performing in WGI, and we made finals and placed second, which is very, very exciting. And then, even though we did have our abrupt end in our circuit division last year, we did win first place.
Oh, very good.
Thank you guys so much.
Hi, my name's Clara. I'm a sophomore, this is my second year on the team, and I'm going to be talking about how we've adapted with COVID and some of the benefits of being on the team. So, since COVID, we started completely virtual. We had our captain leadership auditions online, and we had our team auditions online, as well as we started all of our practices online. Then, we went and transferred to in-person groups of 10 or less with masks and social distancing, and now, I'm happy to say we have full team, social distancing with masks. And that's really nice because it's really nice to have the opportunity to see my teammates again in a safe way. Now that our season has cut shorter because of COVID, we've been using this opportunity in great weather for spin clinics. This gives our captains a great opportunity to choreograph some great new pieces for us and teach the rest of the team some really new skills, fun and new skills. It creates a really fun atmosphere at these clinics because we don't have to perform these pieces, we're just learning these for fun and to learn new skills. Looking ahead at our Winter Guard season, our coaches asked us how we wanted this to look, which was really nice to have the team input as well. We're looking at doing a music video type show instead of competing, but our circuit is also offering solo contests, small group contests, and master classes that we can choose to participate in. This is really nice because it's low pressure, and we can really focus this year on technique and improving our new people. And then, some of the benefits of Guard, what's really nice is there's no experience required. I went in and I had no dance experience and no previous Guard experience, and our captains and teammates and our coaches are there every step of the way to help you. Even over COVID, I was learning new tricks and sending videos to my coaches and captains asking for help, and they were always there with like constructive criticism and critiques and helping me. And we, I met some of my best friends through Guard, and it really gives you a good support system and stress relief. I look forward to going to Guard every Tuesday and Thursday, and there's been times where we've been, all been really stressed, and our captains do a great job at picking that up, and we all just talk about it. There's been times like before finals week, we're all really stressed, and we've sat in a circle and talked about the what's stressing us out, and one thing we're looking forward to. And it's just nice to know we're all helping each other and we're all there for each other. So, that's all we have prepared. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a quick question. How many students are there in the Color Guard altogether? Do you have JV and do you have varsity, or how does that part work?
Yeah, so we have one team, or well, we have two teams, so you can choose to participate in either. And our fall team is typically bigger, it ranges from 20 to 24 about, and about the same for Winter Guard season, it's one team, we don't have a JV and the varsity team, yeah.
Has COVID affected the number of students that go out for?
From my understanding, this year, we have like a bunch of great new people as well, and they're really doing well with the like challenges with it, and I think we've had the same number of people audition this year.
Oh, okay, oh, good, good.
Is there anything else?
How did, how did you get interested in, in joining?
Well, the, my fellow.
All three of you, yeah.
Yeah, teammates can come up as well. I personally was interested, and my older cousin did it, and I would go to her competitions, and I just saw the support from the other teams, like we're, even though we're competing against each other, we're all rooting for each other and clapping when we see something really cool. And I just thought it seemed like a really good community to join in, and she was just telling me about all the positive things and the positive effects on her life, so that's what got me to join.
My story is a little different. So, I moved here sophomore year, and I met some friends who were on the team, and I always saw it before the football games, and I was like, oh, that's, that's something I could do, something I'm interested in.
Yeah.
And then, junior year, captain and her, one of her best friends convinced me to audition for the team, and it really, it was, it's something that surprisingly, I really just got determined and really wanted to get on the team. And then, now it's something that I love and very passionate about, and I'm really happy I did it.
For me, I went into high school wanting to really join the dance team. I had previous dance experience, and then I got the flyer at their little show, and it seemed very intense, and one of my other friends had seen the Color Guard performing, they were like, this is very similar, and they also need no prior experience. So, after looking further into that, we realized that it was such a great community, and realizing how talented and tight-knit the group was, I decided that it was the perfect group for me to join, and I've been so amazingly happy with this team for the four years that I've been able to be in it.
That's really nice.
Yeah, who, how do you put together your, your choreography? Who's, who does that? Do you do it yourself, or with the coach, or?
For our Color Guard season, our coaches let, the captains especially, have so much creative freedom. We usually have three songs during our halftime performance, and usually, the captains get to choreograph one of those three songs. So, it's a really good bonding experience for the captains to create a really good team feeling. Usually, the coaches choreograph the Winter Guard shows, but the captains and the team also gets to put input on what the show will look like, and what type of theme or even song that we're going to go with. So, there's a lot of creative freedom between the coaches, the captains, and the whole team in general.
Excellent. I've, I don't know about any of you, I, this is the first I've ever really learned about Color Guard. You know, we see it at the, at the games, and you just wonder how, you know, what goes into it, and how someone gets interested in doing that, so thanks for coming and sharing with us today.
Thank you so much for having us.
You bet. Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. What do we have next? Our workshop, right? Return to in-person learning.
No, Student Board member report.
Oh, sorry, I saw students and thought, we just had the students. Hey, Zoe.
Oh, there it is.
There you go.
Hi, nice to see everybody again. So, I'm just going to give you a brief rundown of what's happening at school, what, what the atmosphere is like right about now. So, in our sports, all of our fall sports are ending right about now, and our winter sports are getting started. The boys and girls golf teams, and the girls tennis team, and girl swimmings all had really successful seasons. Some highlights were the boys golf team went undefeated in the WSC Gold Tournament, and we also had three school records broken in girl swim by Madeline Padovic and Audrey Mahoney, which was really cool. And girls and boys cross-country had their sectionals this past weekend, and I heard that the boys did really well, and the girls placed fifth in sectionals. In our arts program, the choir program had our first virtual concert last week. I can tell you firsthand that there was a lot of work that went into that, and it was really exciting to see the payoff, and it's still up online, if you want to check it out. But yeah, it went really well. And we also had 25 students in our music program earn placements in the ILMEA District One Music Festival, and we will see later on how far they advance. And activities, it's Senior Week this week, which is real exciting. Everybody's going to be ordering their caps and gowns. Students can also send in their vote, photos and videos, and those can maybe be featured on the Activities Twitter and Instagram page, and there's also a raffle this week, which is exciting. And then, just a few more things, tomorrow, the students have off for Election Day, and I'm sure you've heard it over and over again, but I will take any chance I can to plug, vote, if you didn't.
Right. Check it then. You bet.
Yeah, absolutely. I can give you firsthand personal experience, I've been working as an election judge for early voting the past few weeks, and we've seen a really good turnout so far, but I can assure you that we need more people tomorrow, so I'm sure you're all excited to do your part too, but any chance I can to plug. And then, finally, just some feedback about how hybrid went the past couple of weeks. I know we started on October 19th with the whole school coming back in, and there was some really good positive feedback and some constructive feedback that I got from both students and teachers. So, first for the positives, across the board, students and teachers really appreciated the socialization aspect of coming back to school. I mean, my, my choir teacher, Ms. Belt, told me that it brought her to tears to see everybody back together and just be able to be one, with one another, so that was very much appreciated by everyone. And the second most important thing that I heard from both students and teachers was that everybody really appreciates the patience and flexibility that all of you guys and everyone in the D99 community has right now, like because we're all going through our own struggles right about now, and I, I also value everybody's empathy right now from my teachers and fellow students, and everybody's been really patient, which we need that right now, so it's definitely a big positive in the atmosphere right now. And I know that we did have to discontinue hybrid, the hybrid schedule, or suspend it for now because of the metrics going on, but there were some constructive pieces of feedback that we could use in the future when we hopefully do return to hybrid. The biggest two were just the attention divide between the remote students and the in-person students, I'm sure you might have heard a little bit about that. On the teacher's part and the student's part, they felt that it was a bit hard to allocate the proper amount of tension, attention to the remote students and take care of the students in person, so I'm sure that'll also come with, you know, more time and practice, but that's something we can look into, and a lot of teachers have said that they appreciate all of the efforts that the administration has been doing to give them the resources that they need to do the best that they can in class. And then, the only other thing was technology. Of course, it's both a blessing and it can be the bane of our existence in class. Honestly, the, the biggest thing with that was just that teachers are really appreciative of all of the resources that they have right now, but when we look into the future, for no matter where we are in remote or hybrid scheduling, finding ways to simplify, like what types of software we use and how we use it, like how across the school, we all use Google Classroom, or how most classes are using Zoom, like it's great that we have all these resources, but teachers would also like to find more ways to make it easier, like the flow in class, to simplify it and make it easier to understand for both students and teachers. But yeah, in general, the, the atmosphere right now in school is that everybody's obviously going through tough times, and we all understand that, but I think that people coming back to school for hybrid kind of ignited a little bit of a passion in school for a lot of students and teachers, so it's looking optimistic. Thanks.
All right, and I think Sam sent in his report, is unable to be here, and Janice is going to just read it on his behalf.
He wanted to make sure that he fulfilled his duty, so I'm going to actually start with what Zoe ended with, with the remote learning, and the report from North High is very similar. Sam shares that the general consensus is, is that students were really excited to be back at school, and everyone really loved seeing the people that they haven't been able to talk to for months, and the students enjoyed meeting their teachers in person. There were some mixed feelings about PPE, especially the face shields, and so, we've been talking about that a little bit actually at the administrative level too, and, but the students understand that they need to wear everything, and they overall feel like it's the perfect amount of protection. There are some students who want to be in school more than the two half-days per week, but they also understand why that's not possible right now due to scheduling and safety conflicts. And Sam shared this report earlier today, and in there, there was a general concern about returning to fully remote, which of course, has come to fruition since he shared this, but he did say that it's not what anyone wants to do, but it seems like that most students would understand that that's the decision that might be made and in fact was made. In terms of student activities, at North High, we also had many students from our music program who were selected to participate in the all-district band choir orchestra jazz band vocal jazz ensemble. We had 50 students, or almost 50 students at North High, so that was really exciting. What was different this year is that they had to audition by video, and so that was an additional challenge for them. And that event is November 21st, and based on their performance, they could get all-state honors. In terms of clubs, Sam also was putting a plug for voting. Our government club created a voter forum presentation for educating eligible student voters, and that, he said that the club is doing a great job of educating people for voting and encouraging students to use their voices. Our sports teams also came to a close. Fall season is, is now finished. Our boys cross-country team took first place at sectionals, and the girls took third place at sectionals. Both teams would have qualified for state had they had a state. Swim and dive took second place, and again, several of the athletes would have competed at state, and we had one boys golfer who would have gone to state. So, it was a successful season, and the, Sam reports that all the athletes that he talked to were very thankful to have a season at all, and thought that things went remarkably well relative to the COVID-19. And then, in terms of just, you know, other miscellaneous student comments and stuff, again, there was some questions about the face shields and whether or not they're effective, and one of the things that we needed to kind of explain to the students is that the reports that say the face shield is not effective is when you are wearing it in lieu of a mask, not in addition to a mask. So, that is one of the things that I think is a, a common misconception among our students that we're going to, we're clearing up. And then, just questions about, you know, when we're going remote, which we are. So, that's Sam's report.
Thank you.
Next, Janice. And thank you, Sam.
Yes, thank you, Sam.
All right, just a quick update on where we're at with return to school. As Zoe mentioned earlier, we're moving our direction for a couple of weeks here, so just to provide the board and the public a little explanation of how we ended up where we are today. This is the updated DuPage County dashboard, or it's actually not their dashboard, it's their metrics report for schools. There's six metrics on here which we've been monitoring since they gave them to us in middle of September, and if you take a look, these have steadily gone downhill and quickly over the last couple of weeks. You can see that every one except for one of the metrics is in substantial. You can see some of the key factors that we look at, cases per 100,000 are now above The next one that really stands out right now is weekly youth cases. They increased a week ago by 31%, and then by another 62% this week. Last week, that increase was mostly among ages, the younger kids. So, three weeks ago, it was the older kids, and kind of the younger kids caught up in their numbers, and now it's just all youth moving forward. So, that's not good. Positivity rate in the county is up above 8%, and our region is in tier-one mitigation and might be in tier-two mitigation by the end of the week. So, those aren't good community metrics. And then, we've added our own metrics to go alongside these, they can be found on the 2021 page on the district website under Resources, and there you'll go to a page that looks like that graphic on the left-hand side. On that is three sections. The first section at the bottom looks at the community factors, the second one there is the one we just talked about, DuPage County School Metrics. The top is the IDPH County Metrics. They, they're both constellation values, but don't all look at the exact same variables, so this gives you kind of a broader perspective of looking at all of the things that factor in, so not one single thing is going to cause us to move from in-person to fully remote. But you can see the trend going up is, means the metric, the numbers are going up in cases, right? So, up arrow is bad, and we've moved from, to all four arrows pointing upwards in the wrong direction. And then, we're also, to just break out our own District 99 community, have included the positivity rate for just the District 99 zip codes. That is still in moderate, but has gone up, I think, more than two points in the last week. And our cases per 100,000 are slightly less than the county, but still above 200. The next thing we look at is our actual metrics within the school, and this week, we have four positive cases among students, three from staff. Those are challenging to follow up on if it's somebody who came to school for in-person, and then, any student that's reporting a close contact or symptoms, we're following up with as well to make sure that they're following the protocols and not coming to school and doing all of the things that they're supposed to do. You can see overall, our numbers of students and staff with positive tests or diagnoses have not fluctuated drastically over the course of the school year, but the number that's continued to grow is the number of people that are asymptomatic or are close contacts. So, you can see that number continues to grow, which is a, a key indicator of an increasing amount of illness, COVID-like illness in our community, and these would be the precursors of us seeing it kind of in the community, but starting to make it in the building. We don't want to reach the point where we have a lot of students in the building at the same time that we have a lot of COVID-like illness in the building, and that, we're trying to find that threshold of when it's time to kind of pause, and when it's time to push forward. Last week, it was a time to push forward, this week, it's a time to pause. What we don't want to have happen is these metrics, these internal factors, start to flip from green to red, because that would be a, a key indicator that now COVID has made it inside of our walls, right? Is actively either coming in at a large amount while we have in-person learning going on, or we're starting to see things like transmission actually happening within the school programs, whether they be curricular or extracurricular, or we're not able to keep up on our safety procedures, which could be just wearing the, the safety, the PPE while at school and following the safety protocols, or the things like we need to do, following up with close contacts, or people that are displaying symptoms, or those kinds of things in a timely fashion. The more cases that are being reported to us, the more difficult it is for us to follow up and do our, our safety protocols in a timely manner. So, that's why we start to reach this point where it's just so pervasive in the community that it makes sense to take a, a pause for a couple of weeks and hope that the numbers point back down in the correct direction, and that we could resume our in-person learning So, that being said, we're in what's defined as an adaptive pause. This document was shared with everybody in the community just before, this is the document that came out just before the school year started, that caused us to relook at all of our metrics and how we do things, and it outlined this process for an adaptive pause, a short period of time where we take a step back and watch the metrics, continue to watch them as closely as we have been, but ask everybody in our community to do their part to help drive those metrics in the correct direction. If that happens, this week, we were always, as Zoe said, always sending, intended to be fully remote as we hear the feedback and make changes in the programming and get ready to bring students back for another round of in-person modified hybrid learning. However, now that we have the adaptive pause, we're going to watch the metrics this week and through next week, and we ask everybody in the school community and the overall community to do their part to follow all of the safety protocols and drive those numbers back the other direction so that we could return the week of November 16th, and we would just keep the schedule. This is the schedule. This is the schedule for the rest of the year. So we would come back for week two of the modified hybrid, so the afternoon courses on September 16th. So everybody can do their part and try to get the numbers going in the right direction for us, and then hopefully we're back in a couple of weeks here. So that's the quick overview. Any questions on any of that?
All right. I'm going to invite Jackie forward.
All right. Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Hello.
Okay. Great. I'm gonna try to take advantage of...
And the clicker is there, ready to go.
...because they're just gonna fog the whole time. Okay, I got my clicker. Great. Awesome. Thank you guys so much for having me. I was just saying to Gina that this is really exciting for me. You become a school lawyer because you like to be in schools, you know, helping. And I haven't been in a school since March, so it's really, really nice to be here with you. I'm Jackie Warrens. I am an attorney with Forensic, and I have been spending a lot of my time thinking about Title IX for the past few months, mostly on Zoom. So again, it's really cool to be here today. This is a board-focused training on the changes in the new Title IX regulations. It is not the significant lengthy training that your administrators have gone through that really prepares them to be in the trenches working on Title IX cases. There are specific training requirements that the Department of Education has said that people have to go through in order to do that. This isn't that. This is intended to give you kind of an overview. It may feel a little overwhelming because there's a lot of information, but I do want you to kind of have a flavor of what the, the major changes, the terminology and all of that are. But that said, if you have questions at any point, please don't hesitate to stop me. And I'm happy to try to clarify because my goal is to try to demystify a lot of this for you. All right. So with that, let's jump in. So I do, this is, the goal here is that this is an hour, so hopefully I will be able to deliver on that for you. So why are we here? So the main reason is that, as I mentioned, there are new Title IX regulations. So if you think about, just like the Board of Education, you have your policies, and then there's the administrative procedures that your administrators create to give more guidance on how to implement your policies. The federal government has the same thing. They have the law, which in this case is Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972. And then they now, they have regulations. And the, the main reason we're here again is because those regulations were amended. They came out, they were proposed in November of 2018. It took almost two years, a year and a half, for the regulations to be, to be finalized. There were over 125,000 comments, and the Department of Education, which issues the regulations, had to painstakingly go through and respond to every one of those. So that took about 18 months. And then the Department of Education gave us, gave you and your administrators a couple of months to come into compliance with the new regs when they were issued in May. So they came out on May 6th, and they went into effect on August 14th. Even though it was right in the middle of the pandemic, there's some really great language in the commentary to the regulations, which is about 2,000 pages of commentary that says, you know, you guys have known about this for a long time. It's not like you've got anything else going on, you can figure this out. So there we are. But they, they do require training, but also just a lot of changes that I want you guys to be aware of. Why is this so important? I know this is probably not something that I necessarily need to cover here, but I do find even for seasoned board members, educators, that it's, it's a good reminder of the sort of stark statistics when it comes to sexual harassment, which includes sexual assault and sexual violence in schools. One in four women report experiencing sexual assault before the age of 18. 10% of children are, say that they have been the target of educator sexual misconduct before high school graduation. Almost 50% of US students say that they have been subjected to some type of sexual harassment in school before graduating from high school. And then we know that this has moved online, so even a decade ago, we saw 30% of all students in grade seven through 12 saying that they had experienced online sexual harassment. But we know that number has only skyrocketed in the time since. Now, with that said, for those of you who are Law &amp; Order fans like I am, I always am embarrassed to admit that yes, I did actually want to go to law school because I liked Law &amp; Order, which I know is embarrassing. But if you watch it, you know that not many sexual assault and other sexual harassment matters end up making their way to the police. So this is a 2017 statistic. 23% of sexual assaults are reported to the police, and we know that the reason for that is because they're really, really hard to prove. So you might think that that means that students are, are going to their schools for help when they've experienced these vast numbers of sexual harassment and assault. But that isn't true. So 79% of public schools reported not even one incident of sexual harassment in the most recent data collection issued by the Department of Education. So this is, to me, really shocking because this is for the 2015, 2016 school year. And this was under the Obama administration, when there was a version of Title IX that was in effect that many people said was extremely favorable toward complainants, individuals who were reporting. So you would think that you would see higher numbers than this of students reporting. But even under that very robust regime that many felt was, you know, almost swung too far in, in the direction of being protective of complainants, we still saw, you know, 79% of schools reporting not even one incident of sexual harassment. So one of the things that I really want to get across to you that I think is important for you as board members to understand is, you know, there's a lot, there, there is a lot of anxiety on the part of members of the communities, in-school communities, about what these new regulations are going to look like for them. If I have a complaint, what is this gonna, what am I going to go through in order to have my complaint addressed? And so we expect to see these numbers drop under these current regulations. For me, my hope is that when you leave here today, you will feel that, okay, even though, yes, we are going to be dealing with a system that requires a lot more as far as what the procedures look like, that there are ways for you as the leaders of this district to communicate to your community members that this is still able to be a fair process. It's still able to be a protective process for both parties. And in fact, that is what the, the intent of it was, was to make it fair for all parties involved. And to be able to implement these rules with fidelity so that you're not making it any harder as a district for the parties than it has to be under these new rules. And I'm hopeful that with that mentality, that we won't see these numbers dropping because there really are still a lot of really robust protections for, for both parties under these new rules. We know that if harassment isn't dealt with in the school environment, that it can have very long-lasting detrimental effects on victims. One thing to note is that these regulations, they now say if an employee has a complaint of sexual harassment against another employee, that this will be covered under Title IX. And historically, that's just really not what we were doing. We were handling them under another federal law, Title VII. Your HR department was handling it, and Title IX was really being dealt with, usually by Student Services, because usually it was involving complaints by a student against another student or by a student against an employee. Now, these new Title IX regulations explicitly have to apply to employee-on-employee conduct. So when, when we talk about these long-lasting effects, we're not just talking about the effects on students, we're also talking about the effects on employees as well. We also know that unfair processes can have long-lasting detrimental effects on the parties and specifically on the accused. A lot of people, and when I've done board trainings, people have asked me, you know, what's behind this change? And I would say that the biggest thing is that many felt that the rules that were put in place between 2010 and 2016, 15, were really unfair for individuals who are accused of sexual, of sexual harassment. So many felt that if you were accused, you were basically guilty under the, the ways that schools were handling these processes. And to be fair, this was not something that was attributable to schools. This was the mandates of what was coming down from the Department of Education. And I actually worked at the Department of Education under both the Obama administration and the Trump administration in the agency that implements these rules, that, that deals with complaints that schools haven't followed these rules. And I mean, there were many, many complaints that were coming up at the end of the Obama administration from mostly male students who were saying, we really feel that this process doesn't give us the sufficient due process rights. So it's extremely important to the department, under these new rules, that the due process rights of the accused be protected. Now again, I don't think, I mean, having had the benefit of been on, being on both sides, I've represented, I was, started at Forensic in 2009. I worked there for a long time, made partner, left to go be a civil rights attorney at the Department of Education for a few years, came back. So I've seen it on both sides. I've seen, I've defended schools in these types of matters. I've also investigated schools in these types of matters. The reality is, is that you can get, people can get a fair shake under these rules. I don't know how long they'll stick around. I guess we'll see what happens this week. Even if there is a change in the administration, it's not clear that these rules will immediately go away because they did go through the very lengthy rulemaking process, and we would expect that they would have to go through that same process again in order to go back to what we were using before. So these are here to stay. And again, I think that it's most important for people in your shoes to, to know that there, this is a, we can implement this fairly. We can implement these rules in a way that strike the right balance. And obviously, we'll be working hand-in-hand with you guys to make sure that, that that happens so that we don't have these negative effects on the parties by, by ineffectually implementing these, these new requirements. Oh, I can't even read that. It's so tiny.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's not, no, it's not you. I, I actually was really nervous coming here with this PowerPoint, Hank, because I know it's not, it's not, it's not a piece of art like, like you would be giving. But, okay, legal risks. So the, one of the things obviously that we care about is, is attorneys for the district is keeping you out of legal trouble. So it is required under these new regulations that you implement these rules, that you respond adequately to complaints of Title IX sexual harassment. And we, we want to make sure that you don't have a complaint either with the office for civil rights or in the courts. We're already seeing lawsuits about, under these rules, where people are saying that schools aren't implementing them correctly. So again, really hoping that we will avoid getting pulled into that here. So that's kind of the why. That's why we think this is important. So let's talk about the what. So I always ask people when we do the more interactive trainings, the longer trainings, what is the first word that you think of when you think of Title IX? And the most common responses are sports and athletics. And that makes sense because when the law was passed in 1972, there's no question that it was passed with sports in mind. But if you look at the language of the law, which is probably going to be not legible, yeah, sorry. But if you look at the language of the law, it's much broader, and it says that no person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, denied the benefits of, or subjected to discrimination under any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. Very broad, doesn't say anything about sports. And so almost immediately, the courts and OCR's predecessor, and then OCR started interpreting it to apply to a lot, lot more. And I have here for you just the litany of things that are covered by Title IX. You will notice that sex-based harassment is only one of them. It's one of the many, many things that are covered by Title IX. We are going to be talking about almost entirely sex-based harassment today. And that's because these new regulations, they don't really make any changes with respect to how you have to address these other types of Title IX sex discrimination or retaliation in the case of the, the final one there. So discriminatory discipline, if someone says, I'm a male student, I feel like I've been disciplined more harshly than a female student for the same thing, that would still be handled under your current Uniform Grievance Procedure, Policy 2260. Nothing's changed there. Same thing with same-sex education, if you have a program that's sex-based, or even a school, in some cases, people offer. That would still be covered under your 2260 Uniform Grievance Procedure. Athletics, still covered there. Pregnant and parenting students. Retaliation, if someone exercises their rights under Title IX, but then they feel like they were treated poorly in response by someone at the district. All of that's still going to be covered under your Uniform Grievance Procedure, and I do not want you to think that because I'm not talking about it, that it's gone away. It hasn't. But we are really talking about sex-based harassment today, and that's because these new regulations, as of August 14th, 2020, made significant changes to how we have to handle sexual harassment complaints. And so what does it do? What are the changes? First of all, when thinking about the question, when must a school district respond to sexual harassment? I give my cute lawyerly answer, which is, it depends. It depends on which law you ask. Because we're talking about Title IX here, but for employment, we also have to think about the Illinois Human Rights Act, we have to think about Title VII. For students, we have Illinois Sex Equity Regulations from ISB, and we also have the Illinois Human Rights Act. So when you are required to respond as a district to sexual harassment is different under these laws. And the real takeaway for you is that Title IX is narrower. So you will have almost every type of conduct that constitutes Title IX sexual harassment or that requires response under Title IX would also require a response under these other laws. But just because the answer to the question, do we have to respond to this under Title IX, is no, doesn't mean that your analysis is done. You still are almost certainly going to have to move forward under your Uniform Grievance Procedure to address these other laws. So that's my, my lawyerly disclaimer. But with that in mind, when must you, as a district, respond under these new regulations to Title IX sexual harassment? Well, first of all, you have to give an option for people to report Title IX sexual harassment, and really any sex discrimination, by mail, by telephone, by email, to your Title IX coordinator, to Gina, or by any means that results in the Title IX coordinator receiving the person's report. And these have to be allowed to be taken at any time of the day. They frankly could come to you. And, and you know, you, you would be, if it was considered to be something that was a means that results in the Title IX coordinator receiving it, it's very, very broad. But I think more importantly, in, in addition to this, you have to allow this formal report, is that under these new regulations, they give us a standard where any employee who has actual knowledge of Title IX sexual harassment brings you on the hook as a district to responding under these new regulations. So this isn't a huge change. It's something that's been a reality under all of those laws that I listed for quite some time. But it is a good reminder to you that you need to make sure that employees here are very well-trained to understand that they need to be reporting if they hear of something that is sex-based. It needs to be reported, preferably to the Title IX coordinator, so that a decision can be made whether or not a response has to be given under Title IX. But that, it, it really, to me, the question, what I tell people is this initial question of, do you have actual knowledge? It's sort of an academic question. It's a question that we as lawyers are going to argue on your behalf if you get a complaint before OCR. If you get a lawsuit, we're going to argue that you didn't have actual knowledge. But if you have, if you're asking whether or not you have actual knowledge about something, you almost certainly have it. And again, it's very broad. It's knowledge by any employee of the district. What is actual knowledge? It's really notice. It's either you sense it, you see it, you hear it, you perceive it, you observe it, or it's reported either directly or indirectly to that employee. And at that point, you're on the hook unless the only person who knows about it is the alleged perpetrator. So if you have an employee who is the alleged perpetrator and they are the only one that knows about it, that is not going to bring the district on the hook. But otherwise, this is extremely broad, and so again, I want you to be aware of it. I want you to be aware of this, that it's in the law. But it's not, as a practical matter, going to be something that people are deliberating about on the ground because you need to respond if, if you have knowledge of, of this type of conduct. So with respect to board members, the language about officials with authority whose knowledge, whose actual knowledge brings the district on the hook, it says employees. So we don't think board members are going to, if a board member were to know about sexual harassment under Title IX and not report it, we think we would have a very good legal argument that the district wasn't on the hook to respond on whose actual knowledge brings the district on the hook, it says employees. So we don't think board members are going to, if a board member were to know about sexual harassment under Title IX and not report it, we think we would have a very good legal argument that the district wasn't on the hook to respond under Title IX. But again, this is really academic. Illinois law requires board members to, at the very least, report things that are reported to them, sex-based conduct that's abuse or neglect, to report it as mandated reporters under Illinois law. Also, just as a practical matter, I don't really want to have to make this argument. So I always tell boards, if you, if you hear about anything that is sex-based, just report it. Just, just let, you know, somebody know at the district level. But as far as, again, you guys have like the best lawyers in the world and we will defend you, you know, if there's a report, a complaint that something wasn't, wasn't, there wasn't a notice of it by, by a board member, we'll have lots of arguments, but just, I just say, report it. It's easier. All right. So what are you reporting? What is it that you need to be on the lookout for? Well, again, it depends on which law you ask. So, again, it's the same thing as when you have to report, what it is that you're looking for. It's narrower under Title IX than it is under these other laws. So under these other laws, the Illinois Human Rights Act, Title VII, you're going to be dealing with a much greater universe of conduct than what is going to be covered by these new Title IX regulations. That's actually a blessing in some ways because we don't, you're going to hear about this crazy process that I'm going to zoom through just so you're aware of it. This is a very onerous process for both the parties and for the district, for the administration. So we don't want to use it for anything that we don't have to. But again, I just, this is an important reminder because just because something isn't sexual harassment under Title IX, doesn't mean that the district is going to ignore it. And that's one of those things where I think the messaging is so important to community members that, you know, people hear these stories about this new law and they say, it's exclu, it has a narrower definition of sexual harassment than the old Title IX did. It's true. It doesn't cover as much. It has more geographical limitation. It's true. But it doesn't mean that just because something gets kicked out of Title IX that we're just going to say, oh, well, sorry that happened to you. As a district, you're still very much bound by state law and in the case of employees, by federal law under Title VII to respond. So that message, I think, is extremely important to make sure that members of the community are aware of. Because honestly, the coverage of these rules has been scary, I think, to people who are in the community who think, all of a sudden, my children are going to be subject to predators in the school building because Title IX has been narrowed. And that is just not true. It's just, we're not going to use this process to address those complaints. We're going to use 2260 Uniform Grievance Procedure to address those complaints. All right. But now that I give you the lawyerly answer, I'm going to give you the real answer now as to what is actually sexual harassment under Title IX. Well, we had an old definition and then we have the new definition. So the new definition is unwelcome conduct on the basis of sex that a reasonable person would find to be so severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive that it effectively denies equal access to the recipients, to the school's education program or activity. Plus, quid pro quo on the basis of sex by an employee and a couple of four types of sexual harassment as defined by two federal laws, the Violence Against Women Act and the Clery Act that apply to higher education institutions. Super simple definition, right? Very confusing, but that was our old definition. Our new definition, or I'm sorry, that was our new definition. Our old definition, we didn't have these carve-outs for what I call the Title IX Big Five, which are the quid pro quo by an employee and then the VOWA and Clery Act Big Four, which is sexual assault, domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking. So those four plus quid pro quo by an employee, those are the Title IX Big Five. For everything else, we use this, what we call a hostile environment standard of so severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive that it effectively denies. Our old definition, we didn't have the Title IX Big Five. For everything, we asked, was it severe, pervasive, or persistent? So that or is the big difference here. And it only had to interfere with or limit access. It didn't have to effectively deny equal access. So I'm not going to get into this like in a great detail with you, but I do think you could just see from this language, it's narrower, right, than what the old definition was. And the reason we have the Title IX Big Five is because they narrowed the definition. By saying that conduct has to be severe and pervasive and objectively offensive, if you had one instance of extremely severe conduct, like rape, but it wasn't pervasive, it didn't happen frequently, it wasn't widespread, it was only one time, it would not fall under this hostile environment definition. So they put it down here in this catch-all Big Five things where they said, okay, those, those are going to be under Title IX even if they don't meet this definition. Same thing with employee quid pro quo. If it only happened once, that a teacher told a student, I'll give you a good grade if you have unwanted sexual activity with me, that wouldn't be pervasive. So it wouldn't fall under the new narrower hostile environment definition. And so that's why they put it down here. So again, I mean, yes, there will be things that don't fall under this definition. I think the biggest ones are like joking. The department really wanted to get rid of, like, if someone is saying, you know, obnoxious jokes, dirty jokes in a, in a locker room, they didn't want that to be something that, where you would have a Title IX case brought against you. But I still think a lot of things are going to fall under this that we used to think of as being Title IX. Did you have a question?
I did, I'm sorry. Specifically about objectively offensive?
Mm-hmm.
Who determines what's objectively offensive?
It's a very good question. I can tell you, it is not a cisgender, you know, middle-aged white male. It is, it is, it's a reasonable person in the same situation. So if, for instance, you had a five-year-old kid and they were being subjected to some kind of verbal harassment, you would ask whether that would be obje, whether that would be offensive to a reasonable five-year-old kid in the same circumstances with the same relationships with all the other people who were involved. You look at, if they say it's a constellation of circumstances and you look at kind of all of the factors. So if it were, for instance, harassment based on transgender status, you would ask what a reasonable transgender person would feel in that circumstance, not a cisgender person. So it's very tailored, but the department really wants us to be focused on what is reasonable. You know, and I tell, in the trainings, I tell the story about how, when I was a kid, my grandfather could not tell my mom and me apart on the phone and he told really, really dirty jokes. So he would call and I was like eight years old and he would think I was my mom and before I could say no, he would launch into these jokes. So I am not the reasonable person when it comes to tolerance for dirty jokes. I was raised to have a very high tolerance for them. What the department wants us to do is look at the person who's kind of the more normal person who's, wasn't, you know, influenced by their grandfather's jokes. So it's that person, it's not, and really, the way they're looking at it, it's the opposite direction. They, they don't want, this administration does not want hypersensitivity to lead to Title IX consequences. I don't think we saw that all that much before, but we certainly need to be careful of it now. And they're also very concerned about the First Amendment. So if it's speech, which a lot of time this stuff is, I think we're going to have to be really careful in applying this standard to make sure, you know, that we're only using Title IX for conduct that really meets this definition of severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive. And our training that we've done with your team, it really gets into like a lot of examples of these. So we really are trying to give an opportunity to kind of think through these. But it is, it's new and it's going to be different and it might be narrower. But remember, just because it is in Title IX, doesn't mean we're going to ignore it. It's going to get kicked into another policy. All right. I just kind of went through all of these, so I'm going to do these very quickly. The Title IX quid pro quo, which is part of that Title IX Big Five, it's only employees. So if you have the student newspaper editor who says to the student photographer, I'll publish your article if you do this, or publish your picture if you do this for me, we're going to consider that under the hostile environment prong, not under this catch-all. But they wanted a catch-all if it's an employee of the, of the school conditioning an aid service or benefit on an individual's participation in unwanted sexual conduct. They want that under Title IX. End of analysis. As long as it's in a program or activity and in the United States, which we'll talk about in a minute. These are the VOWA Big Four, sexual assault, domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking. They have definitions for these, the Department of Education. They did not come out in the rule. They did not come out in the commentary. They came out in blog posts on October 7th, the day after we at Franziq did a whole webinar on the Big Four. They gave us the definitions the next day. That's great. But they weren't that different, so that's good. It's still useful. But, but there are definitions and they're part of your administrative procedures. So I keep telling people, you don't have to memorize these things. Use your common sense. If somebody tells you something and it sounds like sexual assault, domestic violence, dating violence, or stalking, tell. And then the final one is that hostile environment. That's a hostile environment. You know, it's just unwelcome conduct, a reasonable person, so severe and pervasive and objectively offensive that it effectively denies equal access. That equal access thing is another one of those things that we lawyers are going to argue about and that people on the ground aren't really going to be thinking much about. We're going to argue, if you get pulled into court, that there wasn't a denial of equal access. But if someone has presented something to you that seems so severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive, you know, usually, we're going to just want to move forward with a Title IX investigation and not get too hung up on this equal access. The equal access thing, really important, it doesn't have to be actual impact. So if you have a student who is subjected to sexual assault by an employee, but they just are amazing and they just, you know, keep going to school, making straight A's, you know, still doing everything because they're just really strong, that's not going to be an argument that it's not a denial of equal access because if a normal, you know, again, that reasonable person, we're looking at that, not on the actual impact. So in addition to being, having to fit into these definitions, this definition of Title IX sexual harassment, conduct also has to be in a program or activity to fall under these new Title IX sexual harassment regulations. What that means is that the school has to have, it has to occur in a location, event, or circumstance over which you, as a school and as a district, have substantial control over both the context of the harassment and also over the alleged harasser at the time that the conduct occurred. This is another narrowing. And this is one that got a lot of, it got a lot of play in the press, that this was, you know, going to be really limiting. It was going to mean that you couldn't deal with off-campus, online misconduct, you know, cyberbullying, things like that. It doesn't go that far. I mean, we know that conduct that occurs on your technology, for instance, like if you're, if you've got kids out on, on remote learning and something happens during the school day while they're supposed to be in remote learning, I would say that you have substantial control over the context and over the alleged harasser in that circumstance. If they're using your technology to do it, I don't care when it happens, you've got that control. But the reality is, is that this is going to exclude conduct that we used to pull under, under Title IX in schools. We used to say if there was off-campus conduct, but it had an on-campus effect, that we would still consider it under Title IX. We're not going to do that anymore. This is a different standard. With discipline, you're probably aware, we talk about, was there a nexus and a substantial disruption? That's not the standard. Even if there's a nexus and a substantial disruption, if there's not substantial control over the context, we won't use Title IX for it. But again, this does not mean that we're going to just all of a sudden stop caring about off-campus misconduct of a sexual nature because the Illinois Human Rights Act still has a much, much broader reach. We just aren't going to use our Title IX sexual harassment procedures to address this conduct. The conduct also has to be in the United States. Not as huge of an issue for K-12 school districts, but for higher education, this was a big change. We used to say, even if it happened on study abroad or spring break abroad, if it had on-campus effects back at home, it would be covered by Title IX. That is not the case anymore. If it happens abroad, if the conduct happens abroad, it's not Title IX. But again, I sound like a broken record. Just because it doesn't fall under Title IX, doesn't mean we're going to ignore it. We're going to address it under the Illinois law, under your, your Uniform Grievance Procedure because it's still going to be covered by that law. You can see why, I mean, there are states that don't have as robust of a state law as we do in Illinois and you can see that this is a massive change for them. For us, it's just not because we're basically, now we just have to deal with the headache, the administrative headache of having two extremely different procedures that we use. But we're still going to address all of this conduct. It just is going to depend on, you know, what we use to respond. All right. So what do we use to respond? How do you respond? Again, it depends, right, on which law you ask. You're going to do different things under different laws, but let's talk about under Title IX. So, again, I, I'm just, I'm so sorry for this teeny tiny little PowerPoint. And I gave it to you in a handout with three on a page. It's like torture. But I will send you a bigger copy of it so that you can have it for your reference. You don't have to use a magnifying glass.
Print it out.
Okay. I'm just showing you that without my glasses, which, which I can't keep from fogging up, I, I can't see anything.
Jackie, it could have been my fault too when I moved it over to Google.
No, it is absolutely not. But, no, I, the points here though, which is that you have, really, you have three options. The first option is if it's Title IX sexual harassment in a program or activity in the United States, you are going to use your new Policy 2265 and its related administrative procedures. The administrative procedures are actually really important for this one because we at Franziq, we worked with press, we were, we made up the majority of the team on press to write the policies. We felt really strongly that we wanted the policies to just include what the policies had to include. And we put everything else in administrative procedure because they keep changing stuff. We would have had to keep coming back to you to redo your policies. So the administrative procedures are really important here. They're posted on your website so that people have access to see what they are, but that's why they're there. That's why a lot of the information is there and not your policies. So that's option one. If it's not Title IX sexual harassment in a program or activity in the United States, then you're going to go to usually option two, which is 2260, your Uniform Grievance Procedure. And that covers any other violation of law or board policy, including other types of sexual harassment. And then even if it's not either of those, there might be other things that you're going to use, you know? Even if conduct doesn't rise to the level of sexual harassment, it might still be bullying. We have a pretty strong bullying law in Illinois that doesn't require showing that it meets the definition of sexual harassment. It might be assault, conduct might be assault or fighting or, you know, there's all sorts of things. So I don't mean to suggest you can't use those. But if we're talking about sexual harassment, it's going to fall into one of option one or option two. And that's really the change. Again, we're dealing with now, just the administrative headache of dealing with these, these policies. All right. This looks great on Zoom, but here. So I do try to give this in a visual because I feel like it does help. I think of this new Title IX regulation as giving us an off-ramp. We have our same old road that we've always been riding on when we're dealing with this kind of stuff. We're still going to address everything that we used to address under Title IX. It's just, if it meets the definition of Title IX sexual harassment in a program or activity in the U.S., we're going to take an exit ramp and we're going to go down and use 2265. Otherwise, we're going to use 2260. And we're always going to keep in mind that we can use another non-sexual harassment policy or procedure to address it. So I'll give you an example of, of an allegation. You have a student comes in, says, I was sexually assaulted in the bathroom at the school by another student. That is sexual assault. It's part of the Title IX Big Five in a program or activity in the U.S. So it is going to go down 2265 for that reason. Let's say that that student says, yeah, this happened to me and the respondent, the perpetrator, they used a knife. And your SRO goes down the hall, pulls that kid out of class, and guess what? That kid has a knife in school. Guess what? That violates our rules. Doesn't matter if that kid used it to engage in sexual assault. We can punish that. We can punish that student for the, that's up in the middle here, for the knife, having a knife on school grounds, without having to go through 2265. But let's say the SRO doesn't find a knife and the only evidence of the knife is the exact same evidence that would support or not support a Title IX sexual assault, then we're going to do everything under 2265. And at the end, we're going to look at what evidence we have. And if we have evidence of a knife, we'll discipline for that. If we have evidence of sexual assault, we'll discipline for that. If they said the sexual assault happened down the street at McDonald's in the bathroom outside of school hours, that's not in a program or activity. So we're not going to use 2265. But we're not going to ignore it. We're going to go down 2260 and address that under Illinois law. So you can see, it's just, it's like an off-ramp that we have to address in the limited circumstance where these definitions and standards are met. So if you go down that off-ramp, 2265, what does it look like? So there's really five parts of a response that are encapsulated in 2265 and in the related administrative procedures. The first is that the Title IX coordinator has to have a meeting with the alleged victim. So a third party can report Title IX sexual harassment, but they cannot file a complaint. They don't get any rights. This is a new thing. They can still file a complaint under the Illinois Human Rights Act. So again, this is going to be confusing. If we have, instead of the victim coming and saying, "I was sexually assaulted in the bathroom," we have the victim's best friend coming and saying, "My friend was sexually assaulted in the bathroom." The Title IX coordinator is going to meet with the alleged victim, the complainant. And in that meeting, they're going to offer supportive measures, which is a new thing. We used to offer interim measures. Department of Education did not like that. Now we offer supportive measures. They can't be punitive. They can't be disciplinary. But they can be things like counseling, things of that sort. And then the Title IX coordinator is also going to offer the victim the option to file a formal complaint. If they do, then we are going to do all the rest of it, steps two through five. If they don't want to file a formal complaint, the Title IX coordinator has to do one more thing, which is consider whether or not they must sign a complaint on behalf of the school district to open an investigation, even though the complainant doesn't want to participate. The reason for that is if you don't address Title IX sexual harassment in a program or activity in the United States under your Title IX procedure, you can't address it. You can't do anything about it. And so the department rightfully recognized that we may have some circumstances where somebody comes and reports, "My teacher sexually assaulted me in the building and they've done it to other students." And then they say, "I don't want to file a complaint. I've heard about this new Title IX stuff. I'm not going through that." Well, as a district, you are not going to say, "Okay, we'll pretend like that we never heard that." You have to, you're not going to let that teacher just continue when you've got this allegation. So the department has given you this method by which the Title IX coordinator can say, "This is so serious that we can't ignore it. We have to do an investigation." But what you can't do is say, "Oh, well, they didn't want to file a Title IX complaint, so we're going to go use 2260 now because it's easier." You can't do that. So if a formal complaint is either filed by the complainant or signed by the Title IX coordinator, then you do these additional steps, which we'll talk about very briefly. Again, the formal complaint, it is a document that is either signed by the Title IX complainant or, sorry, filed by the Title IX complainant or signed by the Title IX coordinator. And that's what's going to trigger the vast majority of the response under these new rules. All right, we just talked about this. So this is what's required in the, just for your reference, what's required in that initial meeting that we just talked about by the Title IX coordinator. One really interesting note about these new regulations is that we have to respect the confidentiality of the complainant up until the point when a complaint is either filed or signed. And at that point, we must give the name of the alleged victim or victims to the alleged perpetrator. This is a big change. And again, this is the one where I don't really have a great answer of how we make this softer in some cases for complainants. You know, we might have had some situations in the past where people reported something because they felt like they might be able to have their anonymity maintained. And now we can't do it.
Well, what about there being a minor? I thought we kept those names confidential because of their age.
Yeah, I mean, we often would really bend over backwards to try to protect the name of a minor in these circumstances. Under these new regulations, we can't. I mean, I should say that the rights of the, yeah. It's definitely, this is one that I think is going to be.
That's a really bad.
Yeah, this is, this is one, now again, the reason, I'll tell you the reason why in the 2,000 pages of preamble to these rules, the department said that they wanted to do this is they said, "Well, if you're a person who's been accused of such serious conduct that it meets the level of Title IX sexual harassment, you have the right to know who's accused you. You have the right to confront your accuser." Now, in K-12, that confrontation is at least less significant as it is in higher ed under these new rules. But it is still a confrontation and it will still be very hard for some complainants to, you know.
Yeah, but let's face it, they know who the person is.
Right.
I mean, it's not going to be a mystery. But to me, the John Q. Public shouldn't, maybe, maybe shouldn't be involved in that. And it.
So that's where we're going to put, we've started coming up with all sorts of creative things to try to help with that issue of, like for instance, we have to share this information, but if the complainant, I'm sorry, the respondent, if the alleged perpetrator were to go out and share that information generally out in the public, we could take a response to that, right? I think we have some ideas of how, I mean, we have to, we have to share a lot more than just their names. We'll talk about it in a second. We have to share a lot. But we have come up with some ideas where we could put watermarks on pages where at least if somebody were to release something to the public, we would know it came from the respondent because it would have a watermark on the page that said respondent. So we have been trying to think really creatively of how to limit this. But the reality is, is that, you know, it's, we have to tell them at this point. If it's under Title IX. Now again, this is why, you know, everybody's up in arms about the fact that all of this stuff isn't going to fall under Title IX anymore. But it's actually, in some ways, it's better for the complainant if it doesn't fall under Title IX. Because if it doesn't fall under Title IX, we can still look at some of the law that we have in place, like to try to protect the confidentiality of a reporting party. But yeah, this is a big, big change. So once a formal complaint, and this is true even if the complainant doesn't want to file a complaint, but we feel that we must do an investigation, that the Title IX coordinator must sign an investigation, we still have to give out the name to the respondent. So that's why this responsibility of whether or not to sign a complaint, it's going to be a really heavy one for the Title IX coordinator to decide whether or not to do it. Because once they decide to do it, you have to notify of the name. I have the definitions for you of supportive measures and not supportive measures. The big thing to know about the difference between supportive measures and interim measures. We used to do things like remove one student from the classroom. So we would, we would remove the respondent during an investigation, take them out of the class, transfer them to a different class. We can't do that anymore. We used to take kids off of athletic teams while we were doing an investigation. We can't do that anymore unless it meets the definition of an immediate emergency removal under the regulations, which is very narrow. It's only where there is an individualized safety and risk analysis and it is determined that there is an immediate threat to physical health or safety. So you could think of the absolute worst sex-based verbal harassment to the point where it led someone to want to commit suicide. That would almost certainly not be an immediate threat to physical health or safety. So this is, this is actually the thing that worries me the most because I think when you combine this with Illinois law, if you don't do an emergency removal of a student, I don't know how we would eventually be able to expel that student or even have them be eligible for expulsion. Because under Illinois law, you have to show that there's no reasonable alternative. And if the kid has been sitting in class with no incident for 60 to 90 days while an investigation goes on, we won't be able to establish that. So it's definitely something we'll have to think about from the beginning. Is this conduct the type of conduct for which we might want to have a student be eligible for expulsion? Because if it is, we're going to need to think about if we can do an emergency removal. And also, one of the things that drove me crazy when I was at OCR is that I was the only person there who had ever practiced state law, like representing schools. They don't know anything about state law. And they don't think about the fact that they're giving the Title IX coordinator authority to remove a student from school for 60 to 90 days while an investigation goes on. Who has the right to remove students from school for more than 10 days? Not the Title IX coordinator, you. So we are going to have to come up with a way to have these emergency removals come in to you as expulsions pending the outcome of the Title IX investigation. It is going to be completely convoluted. Hopefully, we won't have that many of these. But it's going to be a real mess when we do. It's going to have to come to you at the front end because I can't, a Title IX coordinator can't, under Senate Bill 100, send a kid home. Even remove a kid and put them on a, you know, a virtual option or something, it would still be considered an expulsion. Same thing with IDEA. There are going to be things where the Title IX coordinator doesn't have the authority to effectuate a change in placement for a student under Section 504 IDEA. The team is going to have to be involved in that. So there's just a lot of intersections that the Department of Education did not think about, but we're thinking about them. We're coming up with options. But it's definitely a mess. The really great news that I have for you is that they did reasonably say, "If you are allowed to put an employee on paid or unpaid administrative leave during an investigation, you can still do it under Title IX." Thank goodness. Because that made me really nervous if we would have to have a teacher in the classroom while we were doing an investigation that that teacher engaged in sexual assault of a student. We don't have to do that. We can put them on leave, which is, which is very good. I've just got here that summary of only the board can expel under state law and the IDEA, whereas under the emergency removal, it's by the Title IX coordinator. There's no formal hearing required. It can lead to a removal for more than 10 days. Not very well thought out. All right, so then if there is a formal complaint that's filed or signed, then you move into these additional steps. The first of them is that you are allowed to offer informal resolution. And this is essentially, it's mediation, it's, you know, restorative justice. It's an option for the parties to try to work things out in a way that is less adjudicatory, that is less this really serious, almost judicial process. I think this is going to be our friend in this, in this new world we're living in. It has to be voluntary. The parties have to agree to it. They have to sign in writing that they agree to it. Once they reach an agreement, the Title IX case is gone. It's resolved. So even if there's a later violation of that agreement, they can't come back and say to the school, "We want you to reopen this Title IX investigation." It's over at that point. But at any point before they make an agreement, they have to be, both parties have to be allowed to withdraw. And you can't use this for employee on student. You can use it for everything else. And I think this, again, I think it will be good. If it doesn't work or it's not appropriate, if informal resolution doesn't happen, then you move into the investigation. And there are just a ton of specific, very, very specific steps that are required for the investigation. This is a huge shift. When I was at OCR, what we used to do is we would look at your policy and we would say, "Did you follow it?" And if you did, you were good. Now you must do the things that they tell you to do in the investigation. We don't recommend that the investigator be the Title IX coordinator. It's not prohibited, but we're worried about some conflicts of interest there. And there is a requirement for the investigators to have gone through training, for them to not have an actual perceived conflict of interest. I'm doing an investigation right now for a board where one of the parties had a grandparent who was like a, you know, huge figure in the district for centuries. No, not centuries, a long time. And they said, "We can't do this investigation. Nobody in this district can do this investigation because the respondent is going to say, 'We're all too biased toward this person who is sort of this foundational leader in our district.'" So in some cases, that may be an issue, but there has to be a presumption that the respondent is not responsible. So again, that's getting back to this fairness thing that the department is really concerned about. I don't know why that slide doesn't have any words on it. It's just because I'm recognizing that I didn't want to give you the long laundry. This is usually my slide that has the long laundry list of all of the things. It's on there? Okay. It's like a long laundry list of all the things that must be part of an investigation. I will send you a better copy of this so that you can have it, you can look back on it. But really, the most important thing for you to understand is that one of the biggest things about these investigations is that your investigator is going to have to share all directly related evidence that is gathered during the investigation. They must share that, not a summary of it. All of the evidence collected with both parties, giving them 10 days to give a written response before the investigator writes an investigative report. And then the investigator has to give them the investigative report and give them 10 days to respond to that before any decision is reached. So again, lots of rights here. And getting back to the point about, we don't want to share the name, now we have to share every text message that's collected, every email communication, every note that is taken is being shared with those parties. But that's where I'm, you know, we're coming up with these methods to share where at least we're going to watermark this so that if somebody leaks it, we'll hopefully be able to know who it is. But it does not make me happy that we have to do this. I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be a hard process. And also, just think about the time we're talking about here. 10 days to do this, 10 days to do that. I mean, I think that these investigations are going to take 90 days, which is a lot longer than what we usually aim for. We're usually aiming for 30 days, but I don't think we're going to get there. After the investigation, there's been a decision-making process with a separate decision-maker. So this is a different person than the Title IX coordinator, a different person than the investigator. And that person has to oversee a, what we're calling a written cross-examination. So this is, if you have a teacher who is alleged to have sexually assaulted a student, that teacher gets to ask relevant written questions to the student that the student has to answer in writing and send back through the decision-maker to the teacher. If you have two students, they get to ask each other written questions, cross-examination questions. There are some limits on it. Again, that's what I'm going to be focusing on with, with talking to complainants and respondents about this and why they shouldn't be too nervous, so terribly nervous about it. Because there are limitations we can put in place. We can make sure that they're appropriate. They're not going to be able to ask questions about past sexual history of the complainant, medical records, privileged information. There's a lot of protections. But again, number one, this is going to take a long time. Number two, if I'm a parent, am I going to want my kid to have to answer these questions? I don't know. And again, I think it's important for us[1762.81] I don't know. And again, I think it's important for us to make sure that, that, that they understand that we are gonna do everything in our power to protect them, but I think we're gonna lose some people in this, at this point in the process.
What are the requirements on both parties to actually participate and answer the questions?
So, very good question. In higher ed, there's a really big one under these rules. In K-12, there's not. The decision-maker can, um, exclude all other prior statements of the person if they don't participate, but they don't have to. Now, if I'm a respondent, and the complainant doesn't answer questions, and the decision-maker considers them, I'm gonna file a complaint and say that this was unfair process. So I think, you know, the risk to the complainant is that we can dismiss a complaint if the complainant doesn't cooperate. The risk to the respondent is that if they don't cooperate, answer the questions, then there's unrebutted evidence against them that they did something. So if I'm the decision-maker, I'm gonna take the evidence that I have. And if it's unrebutted because they didn't answer the questions, I'm probably gonna find out against them. So again, as the team member who's working on this, you get sort of crafty in the way that you describe these things to the witnesses.
Is there any perjury type of situation if they don't answer honestly, either side?
So, there is, as part of these regulations, there is, um, we are required to tell parties about any rule that we have that allows them to be disciplined for not, for providing false information or false evidence. So if we were able to prove that it was false, we would be able to discipline them for it. The problem is, is that it's usually very hard to prove that things are false. I mean, when I say, when I do trainings, I'm like, false reports of sexual harassment and assault are actually exceedingly rare. What's much more common, when you do these a lot, like I do, is that you see that two people experienced the same thing, and they have a completely different experience. And your responsibility as the investigator or the decision-maker is to figure out what the evidence supports. Not who's telling the truth, not who's right or wrong. So I think it'll be very rare that we're actually able to establish that someone's not telling the truth. But if we could, we could discipline them.
At, at some point within the district, I, I'm assuming this is all within the district that is doing the investigating. Do, um, either side bring in, um, attorneys?
Yes.
To mitigate for them?
They can't.
And does that create even more of a problem for us to investigate properly?
Yes, yes.
Because they've hired someone?
Yeah. So when we do investigator training, we spend a fair bit of time talking about, what do you do when you have an unruly attorney who's in there, like, interrupting everything? And there are things that you can do, and there are guidelines that you can set up for behavior and expectations. In fact, we can tell attorneys that they can't, and advisors that they can't speak. I usually let them speak at some point, usually at the very end, because I actually do think sometimes I value whatever they're able to elicit from the witness, um, for me as a decision-maker. But I'm very strict about it when I do these things. I say, you know, you, you get two minutes at the end to ask, you know, three questions, and that's it. But it, it is an issue. Um, we are lucky, again, though, because in higher ed, the school has to provide an advisor to the students to do live cross-examination in a live hearing. And we are really lucky in K-12 that that didn't happen to us. It was originally proposed. So I feel very grateful that all I have to think about is, you know, hopefully, uh, dealing with an unruly attorney, because before, we were gonna have to deal with an attorney cross-examining a, an alleged victim on the stand in a hearing. And luckily, we don't have to do that. Um, but it will be an issue to, to keep advisors in check. And that's one of the things that's on my slide that didn't have any words on it, is that the parties have to be given, they have to have, be allowed to have an advisor of choice with them at every meeting or other proceeding that's part of this process. There's a written determination that the decision-maker completes at the end, and that's really where it's decided, is there evidence to support this complaint? And if so, what remedies are we recommending? In a perfect world, we would have you all serving as the decision-makers. It's the most logical thing. You're the ones that typically decide, you know, what discipline to impose on, in, in these types of things. These rules are far from a perfect world, and there's really not a way to do that, because you would have to have someone over you that was appealing it, and who, who are we appealing to? And then who's doing the Senate Bill 100 hearing if the student gets expelled or suspended? Who's doing the 24-12 proceedings if it's a tenured teacher? So we need the board to be doing those things. The board is going to be brought in on the most serious issues, but this is a decision-maker at the administrative level here. And the way that we're phrasing it is that they're recommending action, with the recognition that they don't have the right, in a lot of cases, to implement that action without your involvement. So you will be brought in to do that when it, when it happens. This is just the written cross-examination we talked about, the rape shield and treatment records and privileged information that get protected. We're using a preponderance of the evidence standard here, which is the same standard you use in all of your uniform grievance, but I call it 50% in a feather. Um, it's just a tiny bit more than 50% for one side or the other, and that's, that's all they need to show. At this point in the decision-making process is when you can impose disciplinary actions on the perpetrator. You can't do it before, after, you have to go through this whole process. You can't do anything punitive or disciplinary other than emergency removal. And then after the decision-making process, both parties have to be given the right to, to an appeal. And again, this is an administrative appeal, and so it has to be offered to both parties. There are three bases for it, um, so it is limited in some ways. And the party must be able to show that whatever was wrong, whether it was a procedural issue, new evidence that wasn't available at the time the decision was made, or bias or conflict of interest, they have to show that it actually impacted the outcome. So this is a pretty high standard for appeal. And both parties do have to be given the opportunity to submit a written statement, either in support of or challenging the appeal. And then they both get a copy of the appeal at the end. The appellate decision-maker is a different person than the Title IX coordinator. It's a different person than the investigator. It's a different person than the, uh, decision-maker. There is a requirement in these new rules that all members of the Title IX team must be free of bias, conflicts of interest, and not prejudge any matters that are before them. Um, they don't really say a whole lot more than that, but it is a requirement. And part of that is that you'll see that there's gonna be trainings posted to your website. We have to post all of the training materials that, that are used to train your Title IX team members on your website, so that members of your community can review them and, and determine that they're not biased. And there's a significant amount of record-keeping that's a part of this, too. Luckily for you guys, it's not really your problem. Um, but there's a lot. All right, I went a little bit over, but, um, I'm happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any, after dumping all of that information on you. All right, well, thank you all.
This is very helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad, and, and, you know.
It was very informative.
We're always here, if you, if you have any questions along the way. And thank you so much for having me. It's great to see you all in person.
Thank you. You covered a lot of information.
I would like to recognize Jackie and Gina for the amount of work they've done training, you know, our entire team. It's, it's been a lot of hours of training, a lot, a lot of good, informative stuff, and, and it's nice to see Jackie in person.
I know.
We've had a lot of Zoom calls over the last several months, but, uh, I, I believe that, you know, Jackie will probably back us up on the fact that our district is probably at the front end of this in comparison to our peers, and have taken this very seriously, uh, and have gone through, you know, all of the proper training and protocols that we should have done.
It's very true that you guys were the first district to finish all of your training.
Hey.
So. So we get an A plus for that.
Make it an A plus.
Nice.
And Gina's amazing.
Gina is amazing.
We agree.
Hopefully, hopefully, we won't need it.
Correct.
I, I hope so, too. And honestly, I, we haven't had a flood of these complaints since, you know, half a month, but we haven't had a flood of these complaints since they came out, so. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
All right, um, uh, next item is IASB resolutions. So you, just a, a quick word, you all got a copy of this. Um, I participated in discussion, uh, last week, um, about the resolutions, and, uh, would invite you to read through them, and let me know if you have any, any comments, concerns, that sort of thing. Um, I, after reading through them, I'm in agreement with the recommendations.
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Sorry. After reading through them, I'm, I'm in agreement with all the recommendations either to adopt or to not adopt.
Okay.
So if, if, after you've read through them, you don't agree, then please let me know, because we'll need to have some discussion at the next meeting, so that I can vote appropriately at the delegate assembly.
Have you seen these before?
I have, yeah. They're, they're posted up online.
Oh.
And all the, you know, all of the representatives across the state, from the, you know, all the boards have, have been participating. So they had one last week. We have one coming up this week, um, which I'm not going to do, because it duplicates the one that I just did. But, um, uh, the, since everything's on Zoom this year, they thought that it'd be better to have a couple of sessions online via Zoom for people to participate and have discussions about these resolutions in advance of us actually, um, than having our, our, our vote.
Are there any that, uh, you want us to specifically read?
Yeah, you know, um, uh, resolution number two was garnered quite a bit of, of
Number two?
Discussion, yeah. And, and, um, there seems to be, um, pretty strong feelings both ways on it. Um, has to do with, uh, gun storage in private residences, and, um, yeah. So, take, take a look at it.
But number two didn't, it wasn't gun storage in schools?
No.
It was an overall?
Has to do with, with guns being stored in homes where a student, you know, someone under 18-year-old, 18-years-old lives, and, um, whether or not those, those guns should be stored in a locked cabinet or not, and whether or not we, as a, um, state association, should be, you know, taking a position on this legislation and, and instructing our association to lobby on behalf of the, of the association in one way or the other, right? So, um, the, um, Resolutions Committee recommended not, um, adopting. So, and I agreed with that, because I think we, uh, I don't think we need to get involved in gun laws in the state of Illinois right now. But, uh, we've got enough going on. As well, there are other, other, there's other legislation that's being considered, you know.
And they seem to be getting out of their lane.
What's that?
It seems like if, yeah, I think if Isby supported that one in particular, kind of getting out of his lane of focusing on in-district rules and district laws.
Correct.
That was kind of a mainstream issue.
Exactly. I mean, you, basically, you had, you know, people, uh, you know, questioning how you would even enforce, you know, how the legislation could even be enforced. Um, that there's actually more stringent legislation in another bill in the House that's already being discussed. So, you know, um, best not, you know, and then, you know, it's best not for the IASB to get, uh, involved in legislation regulating things in someone's home. Um, supporters see a direct linkage to the student's welfare. And, um, so, you can read, you know, the, as usual, in the report is a pretty good, um, description of, of, uh, who's making the resolution, why, you know, what the reasons are, and then the committee's, um, logic, you know, in terms of why they are not supporting it. So you can read all that, and just let me know if there's something that we need to discuss more, okay?
And I'm sorry, timeline, you need to, we need to know?
I think we, I think this coming, yeah, if you could let me know this week, 'cause uh, if, if we're gonna have some actual discussion about some of these, then, uh, I think we'd need to get it on the agenda. Uh, but, um, if everybody is in agreement with the recommendations, then I don't see the need for us to spend any more time on it. That's all. So.
Well, thanks for printing these. I started reading these. They're tough to read electronically.
Yeah, well, this is, this came from IASB, and, yeah. So, I didn't have this either till today. I just had, I'd gone online and printed it off, and, yeah. So.
Mike, you can take credit for it.
What's that?
You can take credit.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you for caring.
Yes, I care that much. Um, so, uh, the last thing on the agenda this evening, since Nancy's letting me run through the whole thing, uh, reception of visitors, right? And it looks like we don't have anybody here. Has anybody sent anything?
No comments left online.
No comments online. So with that said, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Is there a second? Joanna seconded?
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Meeting adjourned.